Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Lisi. I'm the City Councilor-at-Large and Chair of the Ordnance Committee. We have a joint hearing this evening with the Holyoke Planning Board to discuss a number of zone changes. We do not have the Planning Board with us at this moment. They did just send a communication that they're wrapping up their own meeting and will be over here shortly. But because all four of our agenda items are joint hearings with the Planning Board, we're a little bit in delay this evening, and I apologize. As soon as the Planning Board arrives, whether virtually or in person, we will convene the meeting. I see some folks are starting to join virtually. Okay, so while we're waiting on those documents to come through for later in the agenda, let's go ahead and start the regular meeting of the Committee on Ordnance. The members present are, again, myself, I'm Rebecca Lisi, City Councilor-at-Large, Chair. We have the Vice Chair, Juan Anderson Burgos, Counsel for Ward 6. We have Linda Vakin, Counsel for Ward 5. Libby Hernandez, Counsel for Ward 4. And our Acting Mayor, Terry Murphy. These are the Ordnance Committee members, and I'd like to entertain a motion to take up Item Number 1, which is a public hearing for a zone change application from RO to DR for Gordon Alexander.
The motion to take up Item 1 and open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to open the public hearing for Item Number 1. And again, this is a zone change application from RO to DR for Gordon Alexander at 472, 474, 476 Appleton Street to expand allowed use to personal services as allowed in adjacent DR zone. The Planning Board must open their hearing before we go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up a public hearing. The Planning Board to take up a zone map change from RO to DR, 472, 474, 426 Appleton Street. Gordon Alexander is the petitioner.
So moved.
Second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the petitioner is here tonight. The petitioner also put together a package. We have a paper package in front of us here, and I believe that Jeffrey was able to circulate a digital version of this package that has the applicant -- or he says he's still working on it, but it should be coming around shortly. I would like to invite Mr. Alexander to come into the chambers here for the discussion. I think it would just be easier instead of looking behind us. So if there's no objection?
No problem.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander, if you don't mind taking a seat to the front here so it's easy to see you. And one of these two.
One more, one more. There you go.
And don't forget to use the microphone. The green light needs to be on.
Would you like me--
Name an address for the record, and then you could launch into the--
Sorry. Gordon Alexander, 1450 North Hampton Street, Holyoke. The petitioner, as well as the owner of the property.
And then go ahead and tell us what you're interested in doing here.
Okay, so the property -- so you all have a packet in front of you. The property is 472 46 Appleton. On your Google locator map, it's directly above the word "Google." And that shows it as 474 and 6. The Google just doesn't show the 2. It's 2 parcels, it's 2 buildings. It's been treated as one property for many decades in the city. The parking lot is shared between the 2. This is where Gosse McLean used to be, for anybody who's -- if that makes it easier. So at present, it's RO-zoned, which, back when it was zoned that way, was because the buildings were filled with sort of individual medical office suites, which are allowed in RO. As we all know, the medical industry has changed quite a bit in the past 45 years. So individual medical offices are kind of a thing of the past. What we'd like to be able to do, given the residential nature of the neighborhood, is to be able to offer personal services establishments in there. Dressmaker, tailor, beautician, shoe repair, a tanning salon, something like that. Anything that either personal services for the body or for your immediate personal effects on the body is sort of the definition that floats around. Absolutely excludes any kind of adult thing, in case anybody's worried about that. That's just not part of it. So anyway, so in looking at the zoning and trying not to create any kind of weird spot zoning, the DR zone immediately abuts it. And then surrounding what isn't DR and what isn't RO is all RM 20. So it's a high-density residential area that could use local residential services. The couple of large houses across the street next to the church have been converted over to multifamilies over the years, and the immediately surrounding properties are all large apartment buildings. This just seemed to be the logical change that would allow easier use of these buildings and to keep them filled and keep them on the tax rolls and all the things that we all want to do. I'm here for questions, of course, but that's essentially a quick summary of what the project is.
Thank you. Just because you have provided the Google map and then the color Appleton map--
So on the zoning map, which is off the city website, of course, there are 2 boxes right in the center. They are outlined in color on the bright pink. So, and those are the 2 parcels.
They're outlined in bright pink?
No, they're in the pink area. Let me just make sure. Let me look at my copy, make sure I'm saying the right colors here. Yeah, right in the center of the yellow, you'll see one property outlined. It's in pink, but it's outlined in blue. And one in pink but outlined in kind of a mustardy yellow.
Okay.
Right in the center of the map.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the 2 parcels in question.
And--
So we're moving from the red zone, that dark pink-red zone, to the lighter pink that's immediately to the southeast, I guess.
The light pink. And then what is the yellow at the present moment?
The yellow is RM 20.
The RM 20, okay.
So the red is RO, the light pink is DR, and the mustardy yellow is RM -- I'm sorry, the yellow-yellow is RM 20. I'm not actually sure what that one mustard-colored building is.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Of course. And there are a couple of photos of the building fronts, just so you can sort of know which buildings we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm.
They're both office buildings. They're both fully rented at this point.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from the committee?
Just, is the property empty, or are you -- do you have--
No, they're both fully occupied, both buildings.
They're both fully occupied?
Correct. Okay. We're just looking for a little additional flexibility as tenants come and go.
Okay.
Actually, if I could say one more thing. I did run a list. There are about 9 things that this switch will prohibit and 1 thing that it will allow. So it's actually moving to a slightly more restrictive but more appropriate for the scale of the building and the scale of the neighborhood. So we're losing the ability to put a hospital there, we're losing the ability to put a nursing home there, we're gaining the ability to put a tanning salon and a shoe repair place.
Great. Anything further?
Just those that are already there, it will -- this change of zone will not impact them?
No. No, there's almost complete overlap between DR and RO. There are maybe 10 uses that change. There are, I think, 3 that move from by right to with a City Council permit. But again, none of that will affect any of the current tenants.
Okay, thank you.
And Sharon has generously put a cheat sheet up on the screen for us that shows the overlap and where the differences are. Mr. Kelly, do you want to see if there's questions from your committee members? I'm not seeing any hands from ordinance at this point.
Okay. Anyone on the Plan Board have any questions or comments concerning this particular zone change application?
No, looks like a no-brainer to me.
Pretty straightforward.
I do see a hand from Counsel Vakin.
So thanks for coming down, Gordon.
Sure, how are you?
And I'm just noting that in the change that you're seeking, and it's certainly not in any conflict at all, but I was wondering if down the road, there might be some interest in utilizing the option of the dwelling on the second story?
Well, I think that's always a nice--
Down the road?
--a nice thing to infill and, you know, add additional residential into the downtown core, I think is a great idea. Both of these buildings are single-story buildings, though, so there's no--
You're not planning on building up at the moment?
No, we're not going to build up, and we're not looking to tear down and rebuild either.
Okay, thank you.
Not at this time, yeah.
Okay, so that, I think, might be all the questions from the committee members. Are there members of the public, either online or in chambers, that want to speak in favor or against this project? Is there anyone online? And you're not here for that. Okay, so seeing that there are no hands or interested members of the public who are interested in weighing in on this, I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Thank you, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, go ahead.
Entertained a motion to close the public hearing of the Planning Board?
So moved.
Second on that?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then is there a recommendation from ordinance committee member for how we'd like to -- oh, no, we have to deal -- we have to get a recommendation.
That's the way, planning.
Planning?
Yeah, we're actually, Madam Chair, we're actually at recess from the Planning Board meeting, so we may be taking this up later on, depending about how late we go with the next public hearing. But we'll have a recommendation to you in due time.
Thank you. So just to be clear about the process, the Planning Board needs to make a recommendation and forward it over to the ordinance committee. Mr. Kelly said, depending on what this meeting for the rest of the night looks like, they may be able to have their own meeting, make a recommendation, adjourn, and send it over to us. But that's where we're in the process.
That will not happen this evening.
It will not happen this evening.
You will not receive a recommendation this evening, but the Planning Board may discuss it.
We may discuss it, and we, you know, depending upon how it goes, we could even -- we could vote on it later, but, you know, but as Sharon said, you won't get the recommendation signed from them in writing, or from us in writing.
It's got to come back to us, anyway, so.
So once we get a recommendation from the Planning Board, we would put it on our agenda here again and then be able to vote on it. So it'll be a few weeks before we have a final determination for you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. After you guys vote on it, it goes back to full council anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll be September 7th.
You'll keep me posted?
At the earliest, yeah.
And you don't need me for anything else this evening?
No, I don't think so.
You guys are both closed, so I'm done. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thanks for coming down and with your packets of information that was useful. Items 2, 3, and 4 are all relative to the RC District that's being proposed, Retail Center District. I'd entertain a motion that we suspend the necessary rules and take them up as a package.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to take up -- to suspend necessary rules and take up 2 through 4 as a package. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved.
Entertained a motion of the Planning Board to take up 3 public hearing issues. One, are there zone text change? Change a Retail Center RC Zone, introduced by Counselors Lisi McGivern and Anderson Burgos. Zone text change, Section 8.3 Shopping Center District, placed with Retail Center District, Counselors Lisi McGivern and Anderson Burgos. And then a zoning map changes for series of parcels that are listed here. And I don't want to read all the parcels. Again, introduced by Counselors Lisi McGivern and Anderson Burgos.
So moved.
Second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So given that there is a public notice requirement related to these public hearings, we would just like to state for the record that the city sent out notification to all the property owners by certified mail. There were 15 properties, and we received the certified mail receipt back from 14 of the 15 properties. And again, everyone's been noticed. Just for the sake of organizing our discussion here, Items 2 and 3 are really working to establish a zone that is called a Retail Center District. And this would, like any other district defined in our table of principal uses, it would determine the types of residential, commercial, and uses that are available, as well as the setback requirements, the height restrictions, et cetera. So the first 2 are working to establish the definitions for what exactly is a retail center zone. And then Item 4 is the application of that zone, whatever the retail center final language looks like. So I think we should focus in on the ordinance that we've established the criteria of our retail center zone.
Could I just ask a question, if I could? I'm pretty clear on Item 2 and 3, that in one case we're trying to establish it, and in one case we're trying to remove, I think, the shopping center districts, if I'm reading that correctly. But if, in fact, we don't have a retail center zone right now, then I would have questions as to how we could have a public hearing to change a zone that's currently in existence to become a retail center until we actually did the retail center. Because in effect, you're asking someone to consider a change without knowing what that change is. And I know we have Jenna Wollhoff. I would just like to ask if that -- if we could check to make sure that, in fact, we could even consider Item 4. I know we consider Item 2 and 3, and they make a lot of -- but I don't think, until we have a retail center-approved zone, that we could actually advertise to have a property change to that. But I would like to ask for a legal opinion, if we could.
Sure. I mean, I'll just weigh in slightly and say, I don't think that we can change anything until we establish the retail center. But the thought was that since these are the properties where we would like to see that change, they should be at the table and guiding and, in some ways, weighing in on the retail center construction itself, the construction of the zone.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I don't think we can -- I would, again, I would ask for legal opinion. I don't think we can ask for a zone change to a zone that doesn't exist and have a public hearing for that zone change. We can have a zone change to create a zone, which is Item 2 and 3, but since we don't have it already, I don't think we could ask any of the property owners to really have a clear concept of what's going on. I know we have some people that are here, and that's good. But I think, again, I would like to get a legal opinion, because it seems like it would be very hard to have a public hearing to say we're going to change to this when we don't know what this is.
I think as long as we're not closing a public hearing and coming to final determination, they're all part of the same discussion, and that's why they were noticed together. But I totally am open to having Jenna weigh in. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the necessary rules and allow our legal counsel, Jenna--
So moved.
--to address us.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Jenna, you're not on our screen quite yet, but did you hear the question that Counsel Murphy was asking?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah.
Talking to the microphone a little bit more.
Yeah. I think it's pretty good. Item 4, we're asking for a zone change from RC to the following properties. But since RC is not a current zone, my question is, can we actually have a public hearing asking these properties to consider going to RC zoning when we don't, in fact, have RC zoning as a -- as a -- an established zone at this time?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you clearly. So you want to know whether or not the zone change to an RC to the following properties, but RC is not currently zoned that way, so can we have a public hearing and discuss that?
Yeah. Because there is no RC zone, and the petition is to ask these parcels to become RC-zoned, I'm questioning whether or not we can, in fact, take up Item 4 and have a public hearing on it, since the public hearing is talking about something that might not be in existence and is not in existence as of right now, from what I understand.
I don't have that information in front of me. I could see if I could look into it before the conclusion of this hearing tonight, but that's not something that I can answer just at this moment.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all the work you've been doing, Jenna. I appreciate it.
Counsel Vakin, I see your hand up.
Thank you. And I would like to add to Mayor Murphy's question to Legal. The current order, Item 4, requires the property owners to switch to the zone. It's not asking them to. It's a mandate that they move to that zone, which I think is not in keeping with our idea of property owners and business owners' rights. And so I would also like Legal to weigh in on how appropriate it would be for us to mandate that a business owner who knowingly purchased property under a certain zone could be mandated by the city to change -- have their zone changed. Thank you.
Jenna, do you want to respond to that?
I'm just asking her to respond to it once she gets a chance to look over the information.
I'm going to look at that as well and see if there's not something I could find up until the conclusion of this public hearing, but I am looking into it. I just don't have something in front of me at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only comment that I would make is that the order is identifying all the properties that it would be ideal, at least from the city's perspective, to turn to a retail center zone. Because, again, we're looking to create a continuous, contiguous, single zone for all the different properties in the area to be able to compete with one another on a level playing field. And presently, there's a patchwork quilt sort of structure in that area that gives different permissions to different parcels, and therefore, there are different advantages and disadvantages amongst the property owners. We amend, we amend orders all the time. So if somebody had a strong objection, we could always eliminate that parcel from the list. Otherwise, we do zone changes all the time. We just rezone the South Holyoke neighborhoods with a very similar process. Again, the precedent is there. We do this all the time. We do the notification to allow the property owners to weigh their concerns, weigh in on the process, and allow us to hear and take in any objections that may come up along the way.
Counsel Lisi?
Yes.
I would note, in the reference that you're making to South Holyoke, the Ward Counselor spoke to almost each and every business owner prior to that whole initiative taking place and had the support. I would support this order if we end up creating a new zone out of a spot zone and then expanding it. I would support the order if it allowed the business owners to opt in. They should not be in the position where they have to have informed us that they wish to opt out. If we look at the list, many of these notices went to corporate headquarters that are out of state, and it's very likely that the local managers are not even aware of this meeting. So I think we have a transparency issue. I think we have a business owners' issue. These people that bought the properties knew what the zone was when they bought it, and there may be things in the zone that they want to make sure that they keep. But I just think that we're pushing this along, and when we dealt with this last, I think we had maybe one of the notified business owners show up at the public hearings. And it really was not a compelling interest shown to change their zones. So I would be open to giving them an opportunity, but certainly not a mandate. If there's willingness on the committee to amend the order that, should the zone change be approved, that those owners would be afforded the opportunity to change to that zone.
Right. And to the point that Counsel Murphy just made, we need to take care of Steps 2 and 3 before we get to 4. So why don't we focus on 2 and 3 and utilize our time in this meeting to get work done in the creation of the retail center zone? And then when we get to a draft that everybody's happy with, we could then apply it to the fourth item, and we would be able, at that point in time, to see if property owners want to be engaged in something very specific. The opportunity to engage property owners is still there, but we need to have Items 2 and 3 taken care of first.
Right, but I'm offering an amendment to Item 4 that would change it--
There's no need to amend Item 4 because we're not there yet. We are just not there yet.
You, as the Chair, you've taken it up in the public hearing. So we are there because it's taken up in the public hearing. And so it can -- you can vote it down, or whatever you choose to do, but I'm offering an amendment to Item 4 that we change it, that the business owners may opt in to the RC zone if it is approved, rather than they would be mandated to be in the RC zone. And I'm offering that as an amendment.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it for discussion.
So the amendment was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? I need to see from Counsel Hernandez and Counsel Anderson Burgos where you weigh in.
Oh, no. I recorded no.
So it's a--
So you're telling me in a public hearing, we can't discuss a motion?
We could discuss a motion.
So much for transparency.
You made the amendment. We don't care to have the amendment, but you could have discussed it that whole time. I mean, we're just discussing it. Linda, I would really like to get on to the business of the retail center zone.
You just shut down discussion on a proposed amendment. Thank you.
If it's on the table, you can have a discussion. You were just talking about it. That is it. The amendment was discussed. There was a discussion. Now, we were going to actually turn it into--
You made a motion.
--you made the motion to amend, and that is the amendment that failed after discussion. We just had a discussion about it. On the motion to have a discussion about the zone change in terms of a creation of a retail center zone, what I would like to do is see if we have a draft that we can all work on. I know that Sharon had offered to put a draft on the screen for us to follow along with. And I'm not sure if that was sent via email, where we could have copies for all the counselors, either digitally or a printed version.
I did send it to you and Jeffrey, all these documents, just now. Can they be sent to the committee, please?
So I received--
I don't have it in this email. That would be on Jeffrey.
I just received them, and Jeffrey's working, I think, on printing things out, so I'm going to send the attached items to the rest of the committee. You did? Okay, so Jeffrey did send it. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
I see it now. Through the Chair to Aaron, are these all the documents that Planning has that he was referring to?
I believe so. I defer to the keeper of the record, Sharon, so I would assume yes. And I know that Jeff Burkott sent an email as well, so I saw there's 2 emails going out to the council. I think everything--
Thank you, through the Chair.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so it looks like the most detailed version is this third attachment. It says Draft 2/12/18. And this must have been something that the Planning Board worked on individually, because I think we stopped our discussion in 2015 or '16. Sharon, can you make it larger by increasing the view? There you go. Could you go up one more from there? Even if it doesn't all fit, we'll just scroll a bunch. Thank you. So if we are looking at this 2/12/18 version, it may make sense for someone from the Planning Board to walk us through it, because, again, I believe that we dropped the conversation in 2016, and it seems that you've worked on it since then. in 2016 and it seems that you worked on it since then.
Madam Chair, someone has their hand up. I believe Kate has her hand up.
Mr. Kelly, do you want me to recognize your members as well?
I can't, I can't see anything on my screen except three or four people. I don't have a full screen, so I don't see you raise hands at all, unfortunately. Who had their hand up?
It's Kate.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
I'm not the right person to walk you through the documents since I was not here when the discussion, initial discussion happened, but when we get to it, I would be happy to mention that there are, I think, two items that we have talked about subsequent to this, where, two places where we think we might further amend this draft. So just to note that, I don't know if John or maybe Mike like to walk through since you were here when it was originally put together.
We've had this for quite a while. I know that we have spent a lot of time, planning board has, on kind of coming up with this draft dated 2018. And I think we realize, you know, historically, we're trying to be a little bit more inclusive, particularly with the challenges that are facing in the change taking place in the retail sector today, to give them a lot more flexibility relative to, you know, what we allowed by right. And as I recall, it had significant support from, you know, a lot of the property owners of the mall, the shopping centers around, around this area. And Jeff, are you on the call, Jeff?
Yes.
John, can you hear Jeff?
Yeah, I think so. You there, Jeff?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay. I don't know whether you, I don't know how we want to proceed with this, Madam Chair. Maybe you can highlight or, you know, the differences. I guess I'd assume that people are going to read this through, you know, prior to the meeting, but we can go through line by line if you want to.
I think we've had a lot of success. I know it is somewhat tedious to go through line by line, but I think it's helpful and it creates a lot of context for how to think about these things.
Chair Lisi?
Counsel Bacon.
I would like to correct the record relative to the comment made about the mall. I was in communication with the general manager at the time. They referred what language was available and it was reviewed by their corporate attorneys. And at the time, I was informed that the Holyoke Mall was good with the zoning that they had. They did not want to change their zoning at that time.
I don't think they had any opposition though to that, to any of these changes.
They weren't present.
Mr. Gelskis, that's some of the meanings.
Jenna, I see your hand up there.
I just wanted to, if it's okay, to go back to the inquiry that Acting Mayor Murphy had.
Yes, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly before I give my opinion. Basically, the order states here that there's a zone change proposal to rezone the following parcels to a retail center. The concern is that because they are not currently zoned as a RC retail center, whether it's appropriate to take them, to have a public hearing. Is that correct?
No. The question, the question is, since we do not have an RC zone, I don't think a public hearing, looking to change properties to an RC zone is appropriate. And in my opinion, we would be in a situation where we would first take up item two and three and item four, at this point, would not be a valid public hearing because there is no RC zone for us to change it. So that's my point, is that we're trying to make a zone change to a zone that we don't have. And therefore...
So there, sorry.
And therefore, the public hearing would be invalid.
So there's no retail center zone whatsoever?
Correct. We're looking, we're looking to establish one, but as of now, there's not one. At least, that's my understanding.
Yes. There's no retail center zone presently, but the whole point of creating the retail center zone is to create a district that would include these parcels. So that's why they were advertised together so that as we had a discussion about the creation of the zoning, we would then be able to understand how it could or would be applied to these parcels.
I don't think that changes my opinion that much, hearing the difference of Acting, excuse me, Acting Mayor Murphy's clarification. I don't see the harm of hearing because, I mean, if it's been advertised accordingly, if it's been sent to the, to the abutters appropriately, it's, it's a discussion. So I don't see the harm in having the discussion.
It's actually a zone change proposals to rezone the following parcels. And again, rezoning these following parcels to a zone that's not in existence.
I understand it's not in existence, but isn't the question just in the context of whether or not we could have the public hearing regarding the proposed zone change?
Yeah. My question is, can we have a, an advertised proposed zone change to a zone that does not exist? And it would, it would seem to me that is somewhat illogical.
All right. Let me continue to look into it. I thought you were addressing it in just regards to the public hearing, whether we could discuss it tonight in the public hearing. I don't see there an issue as just discussing it as it's a conversation and all abutters were notified.
Right. That's how I see it, too.
Okay. If it's just in relation to whether or not we could take it up in the public hearing and have a discussion about it, it says it in the order that there's a zone change proposal to rezone the following parcels to retail center. We're not speaking about something that's not within the requested order as on the agenda. The abutters were notified. I don't see a harm in having a discussion regarding it. If there's any other further inquiry or I need further clarification to look into something, please let me know, but that's, that's my opinion as of right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Bacon has raised her hand. Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. I just want to clarify to our attorney that there is an action in that order that is now in the public hearing, which is to rezone the properties. So should the city council approve the RC zone and should this package that is taken up together in the public hearing move to the council with a recommendation from the committee to approve all of the motions? If that was approved, it would force the business owners to move to the new, at the moment, unknown zone. And I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Murphy that it's out of order to do that because it does not meet the notice intention, which is so that the property owner and the business owner will know how their business will be affected. That is an unknown at this time. Thank you.
And that's what the discussion is for. So what I would like to do is ask somebody from planning board to perhaps pull up a zoning map. I think that's a good way to start. Let's look at the area that is in question and perhaps we can identify the parcels that could potentially, if we wrap up the public hearing, create the district, have the city council approve the district and identify the parcels where we think that this would work best for the city. Could we just pull up a map of the area around the Whiting Farms Mall so that we could look at the patchwork quilt of zoning that's in that area? Thank you. And Sharon, did you just pull up this map for us?
Yeah.
Thank you. The outlined parcels of the parcels that are on the agenda this evening, for example?
One would assume so.
Thank you. So in your everyday life, if you're doing business in and around the mall, most of the stores and shops have the same general feel to them. They're large-scale commercial enterprises that have parking, a large amount of parking onsite. But when you look at the map here, you see different zones. So we have, I can see just visually at least one, two, three, four, I think about four different zones, again, that I could identify visually without the key. So we have four different zones here that are creating different height restrictions, different setback restrictions, different parking requirements, different uses altogether. And yet, it's all in the same area and we, we generally know through our everyday lives that this, there's the same types of activities in terms of commercial activities happening here. So the goal, we'll start with the goal. The goal is to create a single unified district on the map that is a way for large-scale developers to see very clearly where they fit in the city. It would help to expedite commercial development in and out, around the mall. It would be easier, again, for large-scale developers to understand where they fit in the scope of our city. And it would, with one single zone, with all these properties under one single zone, it would bring the different businesses in these areas under the same set of rules and conditions and requirements, therefore leveling the playing field. So with that goal in mind, five, let's see, it was 2015, 16. So six years ago, we began working in a working group that had members of the ordinance committee and members of the planning board at that time, examining the different zones that were present. I believe that there was IG, IP, Business Highway, and there was one other business, I don't remember which one it was, but we, I think it was BG, Business General. And we started looking at the different restrictions, requirements and uses that were allowed under all them. And we worked to see if we could create something that would be uniform and advantageous to all the businesses that were located in that area. And what we came up with was a draft of the RC district. So I think this is a good place where we can transition to the ordinance language, although I am happy to stop and pause and see if anyone has any questions as far. Seeing none, we'll go over to the ordinance 8.3. Counsel Bacon, you have your hand up?
Yes. Thank you. So I, you have forgotten the shopping center zone that was created in the fairly recent past by the city council, which is a spot zone in that area. And the context of the earlier discussion was that the people who owned the property in the spot zone wanted to expand the uses within their zone without seeking a zone change. And so that did not happen. And shortly after that is when the expanded discussion about a retail center zone began. So this whole thing has grown out of a spot zone, which, for those of you who don't know which plaza is, which, it's the Barnes and Noble Plaza, and now has morphed into the creation of an entirely new zone, which would at least theoretically incorporate that shopping center zone that apparently the owner doesn't find as desirable anymore. But I do agree that it is problematic to do spot zoning, but that zone was added to the other business zones that have been longstanding and understood zones within our business district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the reminder that the SC district would have been a fifth zone in this area, creating, again, unlevel and uneven requirements for the businesses in that area to compete against all the others. And again, the retail center district was working to create something that would be advantageous for all the business owners in this area and would in fact, if it passed in the way that it's intended here for all these properties to come into the retail center district, it would eradicate the spot zone that we have presently. So it would be a corrective to a problem that was created long ago by a former city council. So again, I know that Counsel Murphy's taking a quick look up there. As we transition to the ordinance language, I'd like to just read the purpose. So the retail center district is an established, sorry, is established in order to provide for facilities in an appropriate location with an appropriate design, scale and intensity, which will create a harmonious and functional relationship with the immediate surroundings and community, as well as support the long-term sustainability of a retail district in the city of Holyoke. These regulations shall only apply to retail centers that are developed in the specific geographic areas where the retail center district has been lawfully imposed pursuant to appropriate MGL. So the one, one other thing that I'll add here before we go on is that there was a lot of research coming out at the time that was talking about the way that malls are becoming alls. Malls were no longer only going to be retail venues, but as we've seen since then, since the research was coming out, we've seen the way that the mall has really worked to diversify. We have a lot more entertainment, restaurants. And in other cities, we see hotels, rental cars and a variety of facilities happening within the malls themselves. So malls have become alls and we wanted to expand the types of uses that the mall, which is a huge anchor for our tax base, could, so that they could attract, excuse me, a variety of tenants, a wider variety and diversity of tenants. So this would be adding to the table of principal uses. This is not necessarily, you know, my language, so I don't know if Jeffrey Burkott, you might want to take over here, but otherwise, I'm happy to just read through. So in the table of principal uses 4.3, all the different items aren't numbered. And I think that this is how it got set up, but I'm not 100% sure. So principal uses, commercial uses is the subcategory that we're looking at. So for the RC district under residential uses, we would find that multifamily dwellings. You know what, Jeffrey, Jeff Burkott, I think that it would be better for you to help us navigate here because I'm going to stumble a lot because it's not, it's not my vernacular.
Well, honestly, I really don't know where I'm supposed to go with this, other than reading the ordinance, which everyone has a copy of. So that's where I'm kind of fumbling myself and why I haven't responded yet, because I wasn't really sure, I mean, other than me reading it line by line, is that really a fruitful conversation?
I think it is fruitful and helpful because I think we need to understand the way that the table of principal uses is set up and how the ordinance is affecting the table of principal uses.
I just maybe offer, Madam Chair, a suggestion here that if we look at the add to 43 table of principal uses, if you, if we had a chart of the, you know, the uses, they are broken down. So you start at, say, for example, under, under residential uses, we are adding the ability to have multiple family dwellings. And that is the only change under the section of residential uses being proposed with particular shopping center district. Then under commercial uses, and if you looked at the other different numbers, we're adding the ability to have a veterinary clinic there. However, no overnight kindling would be allowed. I think you, Sharon, you're getting to it. Go, I'll give you a minute.
Yeah.
So I think what's missing from that, from that conversation is that the SC district becomes the template for the RC district. So this is outlining, and I don't think that that was established previously. So what I hear you saying is that the SC district becomes the template for the changes that we are looking at here. So table of principal uses would look... So Table of Principal Uses would look for the RC District, which is not on this chart presently. We would be creating it, and the RC District would look the same as the SC District, but now we're changing some things. Eventually, we'll eliminate the SC District, and it'll all become the RC District.
Right. If you look at what's in front of us right there under Principal Uses, item number three, multiple dwelling, that would be, it'll allow use under the new proposed zone, under special permit of the Planning Board is what is recommended.
So what we saw under SC District was multifamily dwelling units would be allowed by the City Council's special permit, and instead, what we're saying is that it would be allowed by right in the retail center district.
What we're, I guess what...
Oh, PB, I see, PB, that's the...
PB, we're proposing it be allowed by a special permit of the Planning Board.
Okay, I see that now. Before going on, I see hands from Counselor Bacon and Ms. Panich.
I'll defer to Ms. Panich. Thank you, I appreciate that. I just, at this point, I think it may be useful to step back a little. My expectation for this hearing, and I suspect also Mr. Burkott's and staffs in general, although obviously I haven't done a consultation with my fellow board members, was that this is a draft from 2018. You know, it has gone to ordinance before, and that you all would be at a point where, having read it yourselves, you would want to discuss specific points of it, rather than us having to lead you through it line by line, which frankly, you know, I did not prepare to do, because I didn't expect that we would be asked to do it. And I don't think that anyone else prepared for that specific kind of work either. And, you know, honestly, if there are specific points that we need to discuss tonight, that it would be fruitful to discuss, I am 100% for diving in and working through. But if this is an initial presentation, and, you know, you really are coming to this without having studied it before, I wonder how fruitful it will be and whether we should just continue this to a subsequent point where everyone can have read through this carefully and be coming back with specific points. And that's all, and I will now defer to Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. I agree with Planning Board member Panich, and I personally like to read things before a meeting. I really don't like to receive documents in a meeting and view them on a screen. I think there are substantive changes here. My concern continues to be that it's an expansion of a spot zone as a larger philosophical issue, and I have voiced my other concerns earlier, but in fairness, there are three members of the ordinance committee who were not on the City Council at the time of the earlier discussions, and they've had really no opportunity to look at anything relative to this in any detail. So I think your recommendation is very sound, and we could all have a better discussion at a subsequent meeting, once we can read through this and come up with our remaining questions. I mean, we've actually had businesses leave that were present during the last discussion and creation of the draft, so there have been other changes as well. And I see that the list of people noticed was expanded considerably, and I would note that it includes a lot larger field and much smaller parcels than large retail center, as was stated in the goal. And I would also object to the notion that it's the job of government to create a level playing field for competitive businesses. I think people buy what they buy, they shop how they shop, and they invest to their best interest, as they should in a competitive environment. I'm in favor of fair zoning. I'm not in favor of expanding spot zones, but we certainly can continue our discussion, but I think we'll all be better served if everybody has a chance, at least, to read it ahead of time. Thank you.
Chair Kelly, and then you also have Kate Kruegermeyer's hand up.
Thank you. I concur with most of the comments made. I made the same earlier in this meeting, that I just assumed everyone had this material ahead of time, like the Planning Board has had it, to read through it, because I agree to go through this line by line, if people are seeing it for the first time, it's not going to be a productive meeting. I think everyone on the council and the Planning Board should have an opportunity to read this through thoroughly, review it, come with their recommendations or comments or remarks, and we'll have a much more productive session than going through this kind of like, for some of you, the first time, looking at it line by line. So I just want to say I kind of concur with most of the comments that are just made by Counselor Bacon and by Ms. Panich.
On the one hand, I'm going to agree with that, it doesn't make any sense for us to go through this line by line. On the other hand, this is the second time that we have met with you about this issue, and it can't come to anybody's surprise that we're going to discuss the retail center zone. So it is very frustrating to me that members have not seen this information and have not already read it, because I have prepared for this hearing more than once now, and I'm ready to talk about it. So I'm disappointed.
So I want to say a few things here. Number one, this is a draft from 2012-18. The City Council has not had this draft. We received it moments before the meeting, when I requested documents, and I was under the impression that we would be going through this line by line, because we do have a lot of new members on this committee who were not there, who were not part of this discussion earlier, who never had a chance to discuss this. And quite frankly, doing something at this level of text change with the Table of Principal Uses is going to be novel for a handful of the members of this committee. And so I think that some handholding is in order here. I do think that members of the public benefit from being able to go through the ordinance and the changes line by line. I mean, this is a public hearing, and I do think that there is a benefit from going through it in a detailed manner. You know, again, even in the Table of Principal Uses, while we have the list here, you can't do the side-by-side comparison unless we actually did go through line by line and identify how that change is different from the, for example, SC District that this is being templated upon. I see Counselor Anderson Burgos' hand there, and I'll recognize Counselor Anderson Burgos. We do need to allow the public to speak before we wrap up tonight's meeting, which it seems like we're heading towards.
Yeah, I just simply want to state that this has been ongoing, yes, obviously, before I got here, and it seems like somebody else has an agenda, for whatever reason, that they don't want to see this happen. Shouldn't use the new counselors as an excuse for not to see it happen, right? I think we should have this discussion, we should have this discussion now. Don't keep tabling it and moving, because you have your own personal agenda. And I feel pretty confident that Madam Chair has done her thorough job, and that a lot of other members sitting in these chairs that have been sitting here for years, that they actually know what they're doing as well. So don't use me as an scapegoat to say, oh, these counselors have not been here long enough to know better, because, I'm sorry, I'm listening and I'm paying attention, and I'd like to see this go forward.
.....................
Is there somebody trying to speak? I'm sorry. I hear a voice, but I'm not sure if somebody is trying to be recognized.
Hi, Gurnender Dhaliwal, Planning Board. I'm agreeing with the City Council, you know, we should discuss that we can't keep just putting up every time, frustrating, and I'm agreeing with Kate, and she is working hard for this, all the list providing and taking on by Jeff Barca, you know. So why we can't discuss today, even for the new member who wasn't there at that time? I think they're going to learn more in the meeting than just the reading the papers. So I'm with them. I think we should discuss today, besides, you know, just wasting our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, I see your hand up.
Yes, hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to add and agree with Counselor Anderson Burgos, and I can use some handholding. Being one of the newest members that have joined and under this pandemic, and not having had the opportunity to be in chambers and exposed as a traditional, right, environment, I can use some handholding and would like to go through these tables and learn and discuss. And so that's my take on it.
So it seems that we are at a point where we need to make a decision about whether or not we want to continue to discuss. I've heard members stating the same from both sides. So procedurally, I'm going to continue to have this discussion unless I hear a motion from another member that we allow the public to speak and wrap up.
I make a motion that we hear from the public.
Is there a second to that motion?
I mean, we have to anyway, it's a public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to allow the public to speak. The public that is here, I believe, is occupied at the moment. Is there anyone online who is here as a member of the public who would like to speak?
There is one person.
Can you recognize them?
No.
We have Kevin Solley, who has raised his hand. He's transitioning over to panelists now.
Kevin, are you with us?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please, Kevin?
I can. My name is Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with Solley Engineering, offices located at 251 Denberg Street in Boston. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of the owners of Holy Oak Landing LLC, who owns and is in the process of developing a piece of property on Holy Oak Street near the mall, and actually subject to the proposed zone change. Our properties, we've actually been before both City Council and Planning Board recently, is currently under construction. I think our new addresses are 12 to 44 Holy Oak Street, and we currently have a project that's under construction. It was approved as a, our property is a little interesting, it's a little over 10 acres, it's actually currently zoned with three different zoning districts, which, as an engineer, made it extremely interesting and challenging to try to navigate the complicated zoning regs when you're looking at multiple different districts and how they could apply to a unified property. Speaking on behalf of the ownership, we are actually highly in favor of this proposed retail zone and retail center zone, and also highly in favor of the proposed rezoning to the parcels identified within the public hearing notice. As I think it's been discussed and was very well depicted in some of the materials that were shared on the screen, this small area, which really operates kind of as a unified district, is segmented with multiple different parcels in multiple different zones, and when each one has its own set of rules, it's incredibly challenging for both Planning Board and City Council, I think, to kind of encourage and create more of a unified field. And I think that trying to adopt what's been proposed with a unified set of rules for everybody, in my opinion, will allow for much better, more unified development, and it will create some more consistency, which I think the city would certainly benefit from in this area, and less of a little, less of some of the challenges associated with trying to develop under multiple different zones. I think, obviously, this public hearing is joint amongst the Regulation Amendment regarding the retail center zone, and then, obviously, the applicable subsequent zone change. I know there was questions on whether or not you could have a public hearing if there's no retail center zone. I think, it's been my experience, commissions can certainly consider multiple applications like this, because it really just gets approved sequentially. So you adopt the language, and then you land the zone through the zone change. So I think that's, I think it's perfectly reasonable for it to proceed the way that it is. We think that a lot of the regulation amendments as proposed are very positive for the area, and the additional uses, again, I don't believe that it's, this isn't a spot zoning issue, because the objective is to create unified zoning for a large portion of the community. So I think that's, the question regarding spot zoning, I don't believe would really apply to the way that the application has been created. I'd say from a use standpoint, we actually agree with the uses that have been established and allowed within the retail center district, and the differentiation between what's allowed via Planning Board and via City Council is consistent with how the current regulations read, but again, it opens up some additional opportunity for some property owners. We would actually only add and recommend that both City Council and Planning Board consider allowing one additional use to be permitted under the retail center district, and that would be car washes. Through the proposed Regulation Amendment, it's created a number of automotive-related uses as principal uses to be permitted by the Planning Board within the retail center district. Those are service stations, gas stations, convenience stores, et cetera. Use number 18, car wash, is currently only permitted in the BH and the BE District by City Council approval, and the industrial district as a permitted use. We would recommend that the car wash use, line number 18, the list of uses, also be allowed by Planning Board in the RC Center Zone, I think. We believe that that would round out the allowable uses, and by having that under Planning Board control would be consistent with how some of the more other complementary uses could also be applied for, within the district. So, again, just to summarize, speaking on behalf of the ownership of Holy Oak Landing LLC, who owns a pretty large piece of property that's subject to this potential zone change, currently zoned three different districts, and we strongly support the, both City Council and Planning Board, to view these applications favorably. And, you know, we think it'd be, it'd be great to see this forethought and this planning to be undertaken in a way that really does create some more uniformity. And while it may not be the job of government to create a level playing field, I think it's imperative for the Planning Board and the City Council to make sure that it doesn't pick winners and losers. And by having a hodgepodge of zoning that where it doesn't apply when the district itself operates as one district, I think it's, I think, again, by adopting these proposed Regulation Amendments and the proposed zone change is a very positive thing for the area. And on behalf of Holy Oak Landing LLC, we strongly recommend, or recommend that both City Council and Planning Board view these proposed amendments favorably.
Thank you so much, Mr. Solley.
Could I ask him a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Solley, would you mind, tell me the three zones that you have, the three zones that you are...
We have, we have business and industrial and residential, all on one property. And if you actually pulled up that map, I could show you which piece it is. It's across from the Barnes &amp; Noble Center. It was the former surplus parking lot for the mall, where they did the tractor-trailer training. It's currently under construction for...
Yeah, no, I remember you from the DGR Committee, so I know the parcels you're talking about, I just wanted to kind of get... I just wanted to kind of get what the three zones were. So, okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Bacon, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I just have a question for the speaker. I'm just wondering if he had an opportunity to review the documents prior to his comments tonight that we just received tonight.
We have. This is... Obviously, this documentation has been available. So I was a little perplexed to hear that it hadn't been reviewed in advance. But yes, we have reviewed all of the proposed Regulation Amendments, all of the ordinances. And we believe that, as I mentioned before, we think that they're all appropriate. And our only suggestion would be to add car wash uses as a permitted use by the Planning Board for the retail center district.
Well, it's a good idea if the committee has the same information as the people attending our public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Counselor Murphy, do you want to...
I just couldn't request if someone from the Planning Department could... I know we have residents from 494 Whitney Avenue. They would like to know what their zoning is and if they would end up being part. So could you tell me what 490... If that's possible, 494 Whitney Avenue, what the zone is?
494 Whitney Avenue is zoned BH, Business Highway.
Thank you.
And do you want to speak as members of the public? You're welcome to. You would come to the microphone over here. I'll help you set it up, and you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Roy Britton. I live at 494 Whitney Avenue. Been a resident for 50 years. When I first moved up into that area, there was a lot of farmland. And then the mall came in. It was... Our feeling is that it was zoned at Business Highway. So at one time, the mall was interested in my property. They told me to get ready to move. Three months later, they told me to forget it. So now, I'm being faced with another dilemma, as far as I'm concerned. This retail centers. If I am zoned Business Highway, why is there a tractor-trailer school in my backyard? And why is Amazon allowed to have 40-plus vehicles parked across the street from my house? I know right now they don't have the vehicles there. They move them because they're doing some construction there. They didn't even alert me to this construction that they're doing over there. I heard through the grapevine that it was a possible wetland over there, which I know it is a wetland, and they're putting in a retention pond. Why were they allowed to move in there before they even had a retention pond? Nobody wants to tell me that. But yet, I'm faced with noise, pollution, rubbish. Every morning I wake up, there's soda bottles, bottles on my front lawn, paper blown in my yard, and but it doesn't seem to stop. So I'm not really... I'm looking at this list of possible businesses that could be allowed. I don't want any of them, period, because I've got enough of them right now. The Holyoke Mall, as far as I'm concerned, they should have alerted me to that situation with the tractor-trailer school. I woke up one morning, there's 12 tractor-trailers parked alongside of my house, all out there making noise. Out of sight, out of mind with the mall. They don't care. The answer to the mall is I contacted the mall manager, Bill Rogalski. His answer was, "They are good neighbors. They never had any problems when they were on the other side of the mall." Well, the other side of the mall is all commercial. There's no residents over there. So now they're faced with my residents, and they're doing a lousy job of maintaining their commitments over there. We pick up trash every day in our yard, and it seems like the noise level has not improved one iota. I'm really... We're elderly and we're retired, and I'd like to see both those businesses vacated and just leave the parking lot there. And one other thing that bothers me, too, is the traffic that all these businesses create. It's like, at 11 o'clock at night, it's like a racetrack going down Whitney Avenue. I contact the police department, and there's nothing we can do about it. There's nothing I can do about it either, but complain. But it doesn't seem to get any worse. We'll leave it up to the city councilors and find out what they want to do. But me and my wife, we're opposed to it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. I'll just state, and I think this really articulates another reason why it is important to go line by line through the ordinance. We have members of the public who are impacted by this, and the table of principal uses is, you know, a bit daunting to have to go through. So just to speak to, you know, some of the issues that were raised by the last commenter, you know, the Business Highway District is the most liberal district. The most different types of uses are allowed there, either by right or by a special permit of the City Council. So anything... Any change from that would be more restrictive. It would be, you know, if you're concerned about the noise and traffic issues, I think it would, not by much, but in some... By some degree, reduce the impact of commercial activity because, again, the Business Highway District is the most expansive and most, I guess, liberal in terms of the things and activities that can go on there. So if we were to go through line by line and do a comparison, we would see where things are moving, in which direction, vis-à-vis the other zones that are there. I'm going to see if we still want to continue to have this conversation. I do take seriously the notion that we just received these documents this evening as the ordinance committee. We were not in possession of these documents previously to review, and so it may be worthwhile at this point in time to continue the public hearing, allow us to look through it. But I do think that, you know, the Planning Board, you do have a specialized set of skills, and you're very familiar with looking through and working with the table of principal uses. And it is not something that the ordinance committee is very used to. It's rare that we do a full view of the table of principal uses like this. I can name the handful of times that we've done this in the, you know, 14 years that I've been on the ordinance committee. It is, again, it's novel for some folks and certainly members of the public who are going to be directly impacted by it. So I do think that going through and explaining the differences line by line is worthwhile. We do not have to do that tonight if people want to have a moment to look it over in advance and try to make sense of it on their own. Aaron's raising his hand. I see Mr. Vega and then Ms. Panich have their hands raised.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that if you're interested in some kind of comparison, if you let us know that, that perhaps could be something we knew in advance we could put together. Because otherwise, we would have to jump through various documents online here. We'd have to have the table of use and go back to the ordinance. So again, knowing this meeting was coming up, we would have, you know, answered any requests prior. So we can prepare something for the council for the next meeting if there's a significant request. But walking through, I think there'd be... I like to find the middle way. So I think if everybody had the information first, was able to read it, then we went through to highlight questions or concerns, it would be easier than just sort of reading it fresh for the first time. So there's somehow, I think, a middle way here that we can be more prepared on both sides for the next time we discuss this.
Thank you. I do think that the, you know, a reduced view of the table of principal uses that had only the parcels that are in the proposed area for the RC district. So again, I could name off the top of my head the IG, the IP, Business Highway, I believe it's Business General, and SC. But I'm not looking at a map, so please don't quote me. But whatever ones are present and could potentially change, I think we would like to see a condensed side-by-side comparison of table of principal uses so that we could just look in a more focused way at the differences and the changes and where the RC district would land in comparison to what's there presently. So instead of having RA through SC in one table, just those four or five zones side by side so that we could look at them in relation to what the RC would look like, and the RC needs to be in here as well so that we could look at that and make, again, an apples-to-apples comparison. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do see Ms. Panich having her hand up as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I certainly have no objection to going through a draft ordinance line by line. You know, the precise language that you use is important. And obviously, the City Council can't and shouldn't be asked to approve something that they haven't reviewed in detail. You know, my point is really just that if you haven't had a chance to genuinely study what's in front of you before you start talking about it, we can't focus on the areas that are, in fact, confusing in a meeting. And there will be things at the beginning that confuse people that would be clearer if they had had a chance to read the whole thing. And it just, you know, it is, I think, only a recipe for further confusion to jump into something and attempt to pick it to pieces in detail before anyone has a holistic view of what's actually in there. And, you know, I'm obviously sorry for whatever error of communication resulted in you guys not having it in advance. You know, I just... I think from my point of view, I assumed that you were scheduling the meeting. You would, if you didn't already have the documents over there, request anything you needed, you know, at least when the notice went out. And, you know, maybe we'll be a little prepared or better prepared next time to make sure of that. But I don't mean to shut down discussion about this at all. It has been a long time, as Ms. Kirkmeier points out, and there are things that it would be good to get to. And we just heard from a businessman who would like us to get to it. So, you know, I'm not... I'm hoping that even, you know, if we do find ourselves not getting through all of it tonight, we can get to it quickly and not just keep kicking this down the road. Thank you.
Other comments? Counselor Murphy, Acting Mayor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So just in terms of future information, these are some of the things I would like to get. Number one, are there other areas where we have shopping center districts beyond this area? And if so, where are they?
Okay, we can answer that. Not at present.
There's only one parcel, but the point is to eliminate...
Who's keeping track of the questions? Sorry, I just want to make sure. Someone on the council side is it Jeffrey? Then we'll get an email with all the questions, or is that... How does this work? I shouldn't be asking, keeping track. It's your questions. Sharon, are you keeping track?
I think he's just asking them now.
Okay, Sharon's got it. We got it.
All right. And then I would like, under item four, if I could just get a list of all of the zones that those particular addresses have so that I can compare their particular zones to the proposal.
So I think what we need for the next meeting is a zoning map as well as the reduced table of principal uses that has only the parcels in question and the ones that would be the four or five that are presently in that zone that we're considering. The four or five zones that are presently in the area that we're considering. I know we're using a lot of the same overlapping language here. Counselor Bacon?
Yes, thank you. So my question would be, with the proposed changes, if planning could provide us with, in the case of a zone, what would... A summary in terms of what property rights would be reduced and what would be gained? There was a reference made that BH would become more restrictive, and I think it's important for the property owners to understand what the practical impact would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do think that that's what the table helps to summarize, but we could probably get a list view of that also. If there's anyone else that would like to speak in favor or against this proposal?
If you are on by phone, star nine would be the method for raising your hand.
Thank you. I think a motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain is in order, and...
Do we have the date?
Planning may be available August 31st. It's up to the chair. Mr. Kelly, you're muted.
Excuse me. We are looking, I guess, at a potential public hearing on the 31st with the council, anyway. So, you know, this has been kicking around, I think, well, for longer than it probably should be. So I'd rather maybe put back burner what would have been maybe the amended fence ordinance, things like that, and take this up on the 31st of August. And people will have material ahead of time, the charts compare stuff, read through it, let's be prepared to really, you know, really have a good discussion on this and move it forward because it's been around.
I don't want to move items off the agenda already.
What is it? I'm sorry. Mr. Vega, what did you say?
I don't think we... I don't want to... I see Counsel Bacon's hand up, too. Maybe we're going to say the same thing. I don't want to move the items we already have on the 31st. The fence and the cannabis are really important, as is this. But... And I'd have to check what else... We have a meeting that night in addition to this meeting. So we're going back to another meeting at 8:30 at night. So I just want to be mindful of my staff and my planning board members. So I just want to throw that out there. You know, so you want us to do some work for this, but we have other meetings that we're going to take on the 31st. I don't want to lose sight of those other issues and have them drag out.
And Aaron, we were also... We were hoping to do the restaurant stuff, too, on the 31st.
Right. What do you suggest we do with this?
I'm just trying to know.
We can move it out to the 14th of September.
Jeff, how's that look for us?
Right now, it appears that we're open.
Okay. Yeah, I would ask for the September 14th. Sorry to push it out, but...
Counselor Bacon, your hand is up. Do you want to be recognized here?
I must, but it was relative to the future agenda and the items needing to be addressed. Thank you. Aaron took care of it.
Okay. So then, is there a motion that we continue this public hearing until September 14th at 6:30 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Murphy, under discussion.
Yeah, so is this... Are we continuing item two, item three, item four? Or are we voting on item two, and then item three and item four?
Item two, three, and four have been taken up as a package. We had the hearing together, and so the motion is to continue them all to the 14th.
Yeah, I won't vote for four to continue that public hearing. I just, I honestly do not think that...
Despite the fact that we got a legal opinion saying that she sees no problem with it?
She didn't... She said she doesn't see it as of right now. She still was looking at it, and again, how can you... How can you have a public hearing to create a zone change that you don't have the zone? And that's... I mean, I understand your argument, Madam Chair, but you're asking people to come to a public hearing to discuss something that's not there. And to me, that's just invalid. So I'll vote for the public hearing on 9/14, on two and three. And at some point, if that two and three is adopted and four gets refiled, I could go along with that. But I don't think four could be taken up.
I'll second that as a motion. I'll second that as a motion.
The motion was made and seconded to separate out, the motion was made and separate, I'm sorry. The motion was made and seconded to separate out item number four from the package. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
The motion to separate item number four fails, and I'll entertain a motion, or back to the original motion that was made by Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Second.
Is now seconded by Counselor Hernandez that we table items two, three, and four for September 14th at 6:30 PM. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
It's a three-to-two vote that passes.
Three, two.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the Planning Board to September 14th, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
Move, with apologies to my colleagues.
You're second on the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our agenda for the evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Just a reminder to the planning --